Central School District. Matt Sickles.
Here.
Jake Amadon.
Here.
Matt Murphy.
Here.
Ryan Davis.
Here.
Tracy Marshall.
Here.
Tracy Altman.
Present.
Sherry Sherwin.
Here.
Moving on to the approval of the agenda.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Uh, is there any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Before we move on to presentations, I know Mr. Sickles would like to um make a statement.
Thank you. Um, as everyone's aware by now, our school community suffered a tremendous loss on Saturday. We're deeply saddened by the unexpected death of Mason McGuire, a third grader and son of teacher Christine McGuire. On behalf of the entire district, I want to extend our heartfelt condolences to the McGuire family and all those who knew Mason. The well-being of our students, staff, and families remains a top priority as we deal with the emotions surrounding this loss. Since this loss has so many layers of impact on our school community, the district sought the support of our regional trauma, illness, and grief team through BOSI's to support our students and school community. They've worked alongside our pupil support team to help our students and staff through this difficult time. With their help, we've been able to provide guidance and counseling services to students and staff as needed, and will continue to do so throughout the week. I would like to take this opportunity to recognize the outstanding work of the entire Midlakes family in coordinating the resources and support available to our students. Our staff is also grieving, but they're putting our students first. We recognize that children may have questions and worries about this loss. This is normal and to be expected. Please contact our school counselors or fill out the online referral form on our school website if you feel your child needs additional support. We have also posted resources for coping with loss on our website. Please join us as we extend our thoughts and prayers to the McGuire family as well as everyone who knew Mason as we work through this difficult time together.
Thank you. Moving on to presentations. Miss uh Tracy Marshall and Matt Sickles.
Okay, here we go. There we go. Is that up for everyone?
It is.
So, welcome to our final budget proposal for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. I know it's been a long haul to kind of get here, and I appreciate everyone's time again this evening to to go through this one last time. So, the the things on the agenda for tonight would be to talk about the federal and state updates. Um, Matt will go through some proposed budget adjustments. We also have some new additions this evening in terms of equipment adjustment purchases we'd like to make in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Um, we'll walk through balancing the budget, and we'll also discuss um our federal aid funding and what we propose to be spending that um those funds on for the upcoming three years and our next steps for the budget process. So, good news, since we last spoke, um the the state budget came through and lots of surprises were to be had. Um, I know we had talked about hopefully seeing uh three hundred thousand dollars in additional aid. Um, we got considerably more than that, which is was a uh a nice surprise. I've been a business official for twelve years now, and I've not seen funding come through to this extent to support children's um learning endeavors and communities um in the in the history that I've been doing this position. So this is really a welcome surprise and increase and really good for our our Midlake students and families. So they they came in kind of two different pockets. I'm just gonna talk about them generally. Um, we'll talk a little bit more about the state and federal funds later on in the presentation. What I kind of want to focus on upfront is the the portion of the state revenue bill that affects our general budget that the voters will vote on in May. Um, in that, um, we received about eight hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars in our foundation aid. I believe Amber had asked at our last meeting um about our foundation aid decreases and how they had worked over the years, and I responded by that we haven't received foundation aid increases, that there's a foundation aid formula that relies on various factors in terms of property values and incomes of our families to come up with a number that is equitable to our community. Um, that foundation aid uh has not um been um formula has not ran in recent years. Um, and this year they did start to try to refund that formula and provide the district with about eight hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars of that aid. Now, just for reference, if the formula had been running as it had started back in oh seven, oh eight, we would be expected to have about two point three million dollars more than that. So we're short still about two point three million dollars to be fully funded in our foundation aid. That being said, we'll take the the start with the eight thirty-four. The legislator, legislature has said that they're going to try to, over the next three years, to fully fund the foundation aid, and that's a great step in progress toward um restoring the aid that we're due um through the state budget process. So that's money we can take and put to the twenty-one, twenty-two budget um that we've been talking about, that gap that we've had and trying to close that gap and what tax levy and homeless reserves use. We can take the eight thirty-four and put it towards all the expenses that we have in our general fund budget is what we call it. Now, in addition to that increase, um as many of you have heard, there have been some federally passed stimulus packages and relief acts. Um, most recently, there was the, actually, um in December, there was the Corona-Virus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act, which is we call CHRISIL. Um, and under that act, um, we got one point five million dollars. Um, this money is outside of the general fund, if you will, the the regular budget we have. We have to earmark this money for very specific purposes that are outlined to us by the federal and state governments. Um, this money comes to us in form of federal aid. It's accounted for very separately than our general budget. The voters don't vote on the use of these funds. We have to put together a plan to use these funds. Um, in addition to the one point five million, we also just received four million dollars under the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty-twenty-one. This would be President Biden's plan that was most recently passed last month. Um, four million dollars, we have to use this. Um, we have three years to use this money to twenty-twenty-three. In addition, which was a a another surprise that we had not um counted on was we got an increase to our universal pre-K, which is our pre-K program of four hundred thousand dollars. This is about double what we currently receive for universal pre-K services. This money has to be spent on providing those services to our pre-K um students. So, you know, all told, we're about four and a half, five million dollars in addition of federal and state funding that we are now working vigorously to put a plan together in order to be spent under the proposed guidelines. Like I said, there's very strict requirements on how we're to use these funds. Uh, Matt will outline some of our ideas farther along and down in the the presentation, but what, you know, like I said, this is great for um our students, our community, and um, you know, really, this will help to close um any gaps that we've had this year in terms of COVID learning, um trying to bring back all the support that we need for our children. Um, so this is welcome relief that we're very, very pleased to get.
Okay, so this is me. Um, so you've seen this slide in various iterations in each of our um presentations, but because of those those federal funds that we had not anticipated, we're we're able to do some some interesting things here. So, we're we're still showing the reduction of the one point O computer services assistant and the replacement at a lesser cost of BOSI's services in that area. Um, we're still showing the reduction of the school psychologist position that we absorbed back in September when, by all accounts, the sky was falling, um and we were looking at a very dire budget ahead. Um, we're still going to show that reduction out of the general budget. However, you'll see in a couple slides that we do intend to restore that position out of the federal funds. Um, the halftime aid, halftime type this position that we absorbed earlier in the year when somebody was promoted to another position, we're gonna continue um to absorb that position. Um, the savings from switching from a full-time SRO to a part-time SRO, we continue to show that savings of seventy thousand. We continue to show the addition of the fifty thousand dollars for the cleaner position that was added um during the during this year to support our COVID um health and safety protocols. We had shown in the last presentation the absorption of a clerical position through retirement. We're still showing this as a reduction out of the general budget. However, this is another position that we're gonna be able to restore and and upon the retirement, um replace that position, fill it, um but out of the federal funds. So, we're really in a unique position, as you will see, um to use our foundation aid um in in one way and then use the federal funds um to to do some other things from a programmatic and operational standpoint. And then finally, we are gonna, our our shared BOSI's HR person um has taken another job within the BOSI's, and we're gonna reabsorb those functions here in the district office. So that's a, that still shows as a twenty-five thousand dollar save. So, um, similar to what you've seen in the past, but those two items highlighted in red, while they still show as a reduction in the general budget, we, I want to make very clear, those two positions are going to be restored. We're just gonna do it out of the federal funds. Thank you, Tracy.
So, I mentioned earlier on, we're, we have a new slide tonight to show you. Because we were pleasantly surprised at the addition of the foundation aid and the um grant federal funds, we wanted to take another look at some equipment items that we've, we've have come to our attention this past year, and we're uncertain on how best to go ahead and fund those, if we were gonna be able to fund them. Um, and we want to put a recommendation before the board tonight on a few items that we we think that um a really would be beneficial to add into the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Um, we have to have the voters approve any equipment that we buy in the budget process. So it's important to to get ahead of it if we want to do this for next year. We would like to replace the high school gym scoreboard, and that's a cost of approximately twenty-five thousand dollars. We will be replacing the middle school gym scoreboards out of this year's budget. So the ones that will be left to be replaced would be the high school gym scoreboards. Um, many of you driving down ninety-six may have noticed our electronic sign has some words that maybe you're missing or cut off at the bottom. Our sign is uh getting up there in age, and it's it's typical with technology that, um, you know, it's time to upgrade it. We're looking to replace the sign um with a better, um newer model that actually has all the lights working and is actually connected to Wi-Fi, Wi-Fi, so we don't have to hardwire it. Um, would just be the sign, not the the um support system, and that would cost around forty thousand dollars. And we think that that's an important addition to have communications along, um, that stretch the road for our community. In addition, we also would like to replace bu- a bus lift. We have two bus lifts. Um, both of them are in need of replacement. Um, we'd like to replace one of those bus lifts in the project and one of them um in our budget. So we're just proposing to add one bus lift. These are um installed in-ground lifts, um and that bus lift costs about two hundred and ten thousand dollars. So the total for all these equipment additions would be about two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
And and these are items that cannot be paid for out of the federal funds, which is why we're proposing that they be included in the the general budget. Amber, I think you had a question.
Nope. Uh, well, I'm working it out in my head. Um, um, I was just ahead of myself on the years. So, no, I'm good.
And the, these are items, you know, that we've been aware of and, you know, trying to be strategic, but also not, you know, working within, you know, decreasing state aid every year. We we wondered how we were going to make this happen. Um, and now we have an opportunity to to take care of these three very important items all at once. Um, the high school scoreboards are decades old. Um, you know, that electronic sign is on the verge of becoming an eyesore because especially on the western-facing side, that sign is made up of different panels, and we've been moving the panels around to get the working ones where most of the words are. But that's, we're, we're running out of options because they keep, the panels keep dying. Um, and then that bus lift obviously is a health and safety issue that we want to get resolved as quickly as possible, and now we have that opportunity.
So this is the the slide of the evening, I'm hoping. Um, so, um, closing the gap, we talked a little bit about um how we were going to do that with our our last budget conversation, not knowing exactly what the state aid was that we were going to receive, and now that we have those figures, we can kind of talk about it and give you a proposal for the board to consider tonight. We're gonna start with a deficit of six hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. If you remember from the last meeting, that was about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars more. What we've done is we've we've moved the addition of two teachers that we proposed in those previous presentations. And again, we're going to replace those with those federal grant funds that we're discussing, and Matt will go a little bit more into talking about what that would include in the later slides. So we're gonna start with a deficit just for the the um general fund twenty-one, twenty-two budget of six hundred and eighty-one thousand. We also recommended in the last meeting that we would reduce our contingent contingency around two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Um, our increased state foundation aid, as I mentioned previously, is eight hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. So we would all add all that in in support of our deficit. Um, one of the con- the the concerns that the board had raised at our last meeting and previous meetings is how much reserves are we using? Because they have to be sustainable. They're finite. You want to make sure that we don't run out. Um, as once you start using them, you have to continue to use them or replace them with other funds. So given this increased foundation aid, we're able to reduce the use of the ERS reserve by approximately ninety-four thousand dollars. And then we're gonna add back into that additional equipment that we just talked about at two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. This leaves us with a zero-dollar deficit, and it also allows us to go out a zero percent tax levy increase, um which I think is important, be um getting the um the federal aid funds and being able to do so many more things that we didn't plan on. Um, it's important, and and I think, to to try to keep our tax levy at that zero percent. Um, it's not often that we are able to do this, and I think if any year, this would be a great year to be able to support that um zero percent tax levy increase.
Right, so I just want to make very clear, as you'll see, um, there are no instructional or social and emotional reductions in this budget, okay? They're taken out of the general fund budget, but they will be replaced through the federal funds. The federal funds that we receive, not all districts receive the levels of funding that we did. The funding formulas were based upon, you know, financial need and trying to prioritize the districts that have been underfunded in the past and districts that have, um, you know, larger, um, you know, lower combined wealth ratio, which is a a statistic that the state uses, but also increasing rates of economically disadvantaged students. So, you know, the funds that we're receiving from the federal government as allocated through the state are a reflection of our demographics, and we felt it was important, given those funds, um, to go out with a zero percent tax levy and use those federal funds to meet those other needs um that we'll identify in a minute.
So just to clarify, so those to- those two teachers are those reading teachers we were talking about.
Well, we're gonna, we changed it up a little bit, but yes, the last time we talked, it was two reading teachers. You'll see that we've, we've made some adjustments um to how we're gonna allocate it, but yes. So we had already taken out, because at one point we had talked about reducing and not refilling a position that um became vacant during the year, and we filled with a long-term sub. We already decided to add that back in, so that's still there. We'll replace that position. And then, as Sherry mentioned, we had talked about adding two more teaching positions. They're gonna be moved to the federal funds along with several other things that we're gonna be able to do for our students um instructionally, programmatically, and in terms of social, emotional support. Um, that all are within the um, the intent and um rules of the federal funds.
This is pretty cool. Uh, I don't know how else to say it. I mean, to think that we would be like this. Um, certainly, certainly I was wrong about about many things, um, or my fears. Uh, you know, uh, Tracy said, um, Sherry, have you ever had a zero percent tax levy increase? Can you remember? Um, I mean, this, it sounds.
Yeah, I think we have at one point after that really bad time twelve years ago.
Yeah, two thousand nine, two thousand ten.
I mean, that's, that's awesome, that that this is, that this happened. Um, I I think this is great for this, for our kids, great for our community. Um, the, um, this is, I'm very happy.
Yeah, I, I want to echo that, Jake, and also, uh, Tracy, I think you're right. This will probably be the slide of the night, although uh, Matt might have more with the 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 federal money, I'm guessing. Uh, I I think, um, uh, Sherry, and maybe you'll back me up with the, on this as as a fact. I would think we should let Matt Murphy know, having this being his first budget season, that this, this doesn't happen, um.
No, no. Yeah, when, yeah.
But I I think, I think that the idea to go out at zero percent is is critical. I I think it would be, uh, you know, a great win for the district, for our taxpayers, so I I I think that's great.
Uh, Tracy called, I think these, the aid runs came out last Wednesday night, and and Tracy called me and said, have you seen it? And she had actually gotten it through a listener that is for business officials. I hadn't got it, gotten it yet. So she sent it to me, and we were looking at it, you know, while we're talking on the phone with disbelief, like, is this even possible? So, the, again, this is sort of, feels like a once-in-a-lifetime thing, um, and we we get to do two things at once, which is really take care of our community in terms of that tax levy, but but even more importantly, as you'll see, take care of our students um in terms of providing really targeted support um to help recover from what we've been through these last couple of years.
Well, and hopefully, you know, the state will continue to see the gaps that have really been there with with some of the districts, and. But, yeah, it's exciting.
Yes.
And Matt, you're, the equipment cost to the sign, in in my career, I've I've had the the pleasure of doing now four of those signs, uh, just recently, a month ago, and you're, and you're right, as soon as those panels start to go, it's like dominoes, they'll all go, and replacing them becomes nearly impossible because the, that technology is four generations ago now. So I, you know, i- if we have the opportunity, I think you're right.
All right, we, we don't want a a brick holder for a dark screen that doesn't work.
Can, can you just clarify, zero percent tax levy increase, does that mean it stays the same as last year? Okay.
So, now, in individual taxpayers', tax rates will be impacted through reassessments and equalization rates by town, but the total number of tax dollars that we collect as a school district will be flat from last year. So, we collect the same dollars, but individual taxpayers may see changes um to their individual tax bills, and and Tracy, you're able to explain that much better than I, if there's anything you want to add to that.
Nope, that was perfect.
And so what did we, what were? I don't want to be confusing. So what did we go out at last year?
Two point seven five percent increase.
Thank you.
Any other questions here?
So I just wanted to show the use of the reserves. As I mentioned, we are going to reduce the use of the um employee retirement system reserved by about ninety-four thousand dollars. So, um, while it's not, you know, significant amount on top of the the one point um four, it is something, and it's in the right direction, and we're hopeful as we move forward with this restoration of foundation aid and the use of the grant funds that will be able to back, ease off a little bit on these reserves and future budgets as well. So this year, we're going from about one point four seven seven to about one point three eight one in the use of reserves. And then I'll turn this over to Mr. Sickles, and you're right, Ryan, this this may, this may outdo the previous slide, but it's certainly uh an exciting and um ambitious uh plan that we have here, and this is just the beginning.
So, I want to start off with the fact that we have two pots of federal money. The CHRISIL money is one point five million dollars that must be spent by September of twenty-twenty-two. And that has its own set of rules of things that we can spend it on. And and because it's got the sooner expiration date, we will make sure that we expend those funds first. The American Rescue Plan, or ARP-A, money, the four million dollars, is for three years from twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-four, so we have a little bit longer to use that. It has its own set of rules, so some of it, some of these two pots of money we'll use simultaneously because not everything we're doing, you know, some of it fits under one, some of it fits under the other, but we will prioritize the CHRISIL money as much as possible to make sure that we don't leave anything on the table. You know, some of it fits under one, some of it fits under the other, but we will prioritize the Chrissa money as much as possible to make sure that we don't leave anything on the table. There are requirements and I'll get into those a little bit. And these at this point are, there's nothing set in stone, there are, these are ideas, but. We have others that we're going to explore or we're investigating and evaluating the ones that are on the screen now, but we wouldn't put them up. If we weren't reasonably confident that the, at the very least, these would be included in some way, shape or form. Okay. Again, we'll continue to evaluate, the American Rescue Plan Act specifically. Requires that on or before July one of each year that the money is available. That we post on our website, a plan of how we intend to use those funds. So I anticipate there will be a presentation in May or June. Once we've had a chance to fully analyze our needs about how we intend to, to spend these funds. We need to be strategic now. Both sets of funds place, that both pieces of legislation place an emphasis. On nonrecurring expenses when possible, however. Schools, the way where they operate, as you know, in budgets. Seventy five to eighty percent of school budgets are salary and benefits, we're, we're a people driven business, we're, we're positions. So it's hard to spend that kind of money on nonrecurring costs, so. In cases where they are recurring costs, we have to identify a general plan. Of how we intend to manage the eventual depletion of these funds. Now, because some of these items that you see here are specific to a time period. Like, you know, materials and supplies to support in-person instruction, at some point. We're going to have everything we need and that's something that is nonrecurring and will go away. Or things that are specifically related to COVID. I certainly hope that at some point that goes away, we don't need to do that anymore. Things aimed at specific learning losses and learning gaps. Hopefully, we close those and those things are no longer needed. And then in other places, what we will do is we will strategically, over the course of these next three years. Find ways, you know, to absorb into the budget. Those positions that should be held on to long term. And with the legislature's plan to restore foundation aid over three years, we hope that we're able to do that. So understand that some of these positions truly are intended to be short term. To close learning gaps and may be absorbed or eliminated and aligned with retirements, hopefully in the future. As, as we sort of right size over time. So I just want to put that in perspective that these aren't all, these aren't necessarily forever additions. So first and foremost, materials and supplies to support in-person instruction. So as we, and I'll get in my superintendent's report into the new, the updated New York State guidance. We now have some flexibility through both of these pieces of legislation and both sources of funding. To both purchase forward, but also potentially back bill for some items that we've had to purchase to date. Around COVID and in-person instruction. The next two items are requirements of the American Rescue Plan Act. Summer programming and after-school programming, so by statute, in the legislation, we're required to spend. Over the three years, fourteen point two eight six percent. Of our allocation on summer programming. And another fourteen point two eight six percent on after-school or extended school day programs. That's fourteen point two eight six percent is five hundred and eighty three thousand dollars. So over three years, five hundred and eighty three thousand dollars has to be spent on summer programming. And five hundred and eighty three thousand dollars on after-school and extended year programming. That is going to take an intense planning effort all by itself. That's some pretty robust programming. That, you know, we're less than a week in receipt of this information. So we're still processing that and, and we'll have to develop plans for expending those funds. But that is specifically designed to close those learning gaps that have been created. By COVID and by remote and hybrid instruction that the federal government recognizes have existed everywhere. Not just at Mid Lakes. Then, as we look forward, we're proposing initially the addition of a grade three teacher. So right now, we have seven sections at kindergarten, seven at first grade. Then we dropped to six sections at second grade. And then at fifth, or at third grade, we dropped to five sections and stay at five sections through elementary school. Given the fact that we know we have significant learning gaps around reading and math. K through three right now, especially K through two. With the second grade going to third grade next year, we're proposing adding a section, bringing that to six. So that there's not that drop off at third grade. So that we can provide more tier one instruction. Through smaller class size and not have that drop off from second to third grade. In the current year's budget, so last year's budget cycle, but the current year's budget, we eliminated. A reading teacher and a math A I S teacher at the K six level. Part of our initial proposal, and this still has to be evaluated and worked out, is that we add those back in now. Would these be permanent long term? Well, hopefully, they don't need to be, hopefully, we close the gaps and then over the life of the, these grants, we can wean off of them. But adding that these tier two, tier three supports for a time. To close those learning gaps and to spread out our reading and math intervention. Across K six through additional support. Mentioned earlier, you know, we absorbed a school psychologist position through a departure back in September. When all indications were that we were in for a very bad budget year. So we were trying to save wherever we could. Now with these funds, we feel confident in restoring that position. To provide I E P support, but also additional tier two and tier three social emotional support that we. Expect to need as we come out of the COVID crisis. But we're able to move that out of the budget still, out of the general budget into the federal funds. We're looking at a school counselor and I, I would say and or potentially a social worker. There's a potential for both, we're going to continue to evaluate. But we could be adding additional tier one social emotional support. And possibly tier two, tier three, social emotional support through the social worker. That could also do attendance intervention and community engagement, so. You know, again, nothing guaranteed here, we need to do a, a more detailed analysis, but we wouldn't be putting these things up here. If we weren't reasonably confident in being able to add them again. The, the lifespan of these positions will have to be evaluated over time in relation to our available funds. We hope to be able to make a substantial investment in professional development specifically around reading and math. To support tier one instruction, especially K six, but potentially, you know, across additional grade levels. So that instruction improve, you know, i- is more robust and is bolstered. Across grade levels for all of our students. We had talked about absorbing when, when we're still thinking we're going to have trouble balancing a budget, we're going to absorb a clerical position. That can now be filled when it's vacated through retirement, but it can. One of the goals of these funds is to avoid reductions and layoffs, so. We can return that clerical position and fill it, but just move it to the federal funds. And then also add a cleaner or laborer will evaluate our needs in terms of which job title makes the most sense. But this will help, you know, support our, our continued COVID health and safety protocols, which we. Fully expect to have to continue in, in some shape or form next school year, so. This is the list we have now, I will tell you, there is an additional list that we're evaluating. But, you know, we have to manage these funds so that they can last for as long as possible and that we can manage. Weaning ourselves off of them so that we don't create our own financial cliff when these funds are gone. So. We, we could have filled probably another page with ideas, I know we could have filled another page because I've got the page right here. On my desk, but we got to be very strategic. And in May and, and or June, we'll be doing presentations on how we plan to use these funds specifically. To support these positions, we hope, and, and possibly some others. So that we can keep our students safe and healthy at school. And we can provide them with the social emotional support that they need. And we can provide them with the instructional support and intervention to close the learning gaps that have opened up over the last, you know, thirteen, fourteen months. Questions?
I know you said one point five you had to spend in, by September of twenty two. So is that kind of a use it or lose it situation? Yeah, okay.
Tracy, you want to answer that?
Yeah, so I just, I want to take note, we don't have the formalized guidance on the, on any of the, the way to use these funds in terms of how they're going to be. Rolled over or accounted for in a lot of detail. We do know the areas in which we are able to spend the funds and those are the ones we've outlined for you tonight. But there may be additional guidance on, on the timelines or anything else, I don't want to say it's set in stone, but that's initial guidance we have thus far.
I'm sure there'll be plenty of guidance coming your way, okay, I was just curious.
And we, as you see, we, we really tried to balance the tier one and the tier two and three interventions. Hoping that over time, the tier two and tier three, you know, we won't need necessarily that much tier two and tier three intervention. But then also bolstering the tier one instruction, which is what all students receive. And then hopefully, over time, that reaps the results we want for all of our students. I see people reaching for microphones.
Does anybody have any questions? I mean, I know we have it under board discussion, but if you have questions now, hit them up.
I was just going to say, I appreciate the consideration, all tiers, because I think we need supports all around, you know, primarily tier one. But we will need the tier two, tier three stuff too, so I, I'm appreciative that you were able to balance out that.
Great. All right, we'll move to the next steps.
Hey, Matt, just real quick, it says that you're going to be presenting a more formal. What do you think the timeline would that, would that be before end of this school year?
Yeah, we, we, for the rescue plan specifically, we have to post. On our website by July one of, for each year that the funds are available, we have to post a plan, so I would expect. That, you know, we would want the board, even though it's out, it, you know, these are special aid funds, these are not. You know, part of the general budget, you know, we would ask the, you know, the board to consider and approve. These spending plans before we, we post them and we would want to have them, you know, so that would have to happen at the June meeting.
Okay, thanks.
So. The next steps would be to adopt our final budget figure at the April twenty first meeting. We'll hold our public budget hearing on May tenth and our budget vote will be on May eighteenth. Any questions? Great, thank you.
Do you want to move on Amber and then we'll come back to discussion later or?
Um, yeah, well, wait, I have reports next, yes?
Right, right.
Yes, let's, let's do that, yes, let's, and then let's hit this underboard discussion if anybody else has any more comments, if you don't mind.
No problem. Okay, so, I do want to focus upon the New York State Department of Health guidelines that came out. Late Friday afternoon through the press, they actually weren't emailed to school districts by the Department of Health until Saturday morning. But we actually got them through some press websites Friday night and started going through them. I had fully intended to have a detailed PowerPoint presentation tonight to really debrief and, and break down these guidelines. But in full transparency, since Sunday morning early, we have been focused. Solely on our trauma, illness and grief response. We had a team of about ten or twelve people here. For about eight or ten hours on Sunday, and this has been our focus, we did have a, a meeting this morning with those administrators who were available. But some had to be available to, to support our, our students and staff. And we have another meeting tomorrow morning, so I do apologize that this is not, it's going to be verbal, so. I'll, I'll try to pause for questions along the way. And then more information will be forthcoming as we go through. So the, the state did come out with guidelines, why at five thirty on a Friday? In the week that half the state was on their spring break, I'll never quite understand, but. Certainly not the first time that's happened. So again, our team is analyzing the guidelines and advancing our planning process. While we continue to manage our, our, our response to the, the recent tragedy. The updated guidelines do align to the CDC recommendations. Which. Is good because we've had those. Fortunately, those guidelines, those recommendations don't provide Mid Lakes necessarily with some of the relief that would have been beneficial, but I'll, I'll explain how that might play out. There's also some pieces that, that I think generally get overlooked that are going to impact how we move forward. So the guidelines state, first of all, masking, if you're going to move to three feet, which is the big, the big deal in the guide, the new guidance. You have to have mandatory masking, except when students are eating. So that's one, one big piece. But the guidelines state that the ability to move from six feet to three feet social distancing. Is dependent upon the county's COVID transmission rate. There's different levels, low, moderate, substantial and high. And you're able to do different things depending upon your county transmission rate. Unfortunately, when, when the CDC guidelines first came out, Ontario County was at substantial, which wasn't great, but it wasn't the highest rate. We're now at high transmission rate. We have with, we currently, Ontario County's seven day. Rolling total of positive cases is two hundred and forty five counting today. In order to get to drop back down to substantial, that has to drop under a hundred. So it has to be cut by more than a half. Our, as evidenced by the many messages that have gone out from me recently. Our, our county's transmission rate is very much on the rise. So we don't, we have some limitations on us because we are in a high transmission area. So Ontario County must move down to a substantial transmission. Before we can move to three feet at the middle or high school levels. Unless we were to cohort students. However, cohorting students, which means keeping students together. As a small group to. As a small group together all day, every day. Doing that at the secondary level, seven through twelve, with the dynamic dynamic nature. Of high, middle and high school schedules is very difficult. What it basically mean would be putting fifteen kids who don't have all the same classes in a room together all day. And they'd be at school, but they'd essentially be learning remotely because their teachers, they can't go to. You know, I couldn't leave the room to go to my English class while my, the kid sitting next to me went to his science class. Everybody would have to stay put in a room and essentially learn remotely. With their teacher somewhere else. It's just, it's very, very difficult to do at the secondary level. Amber, do you have a question?
Um, yeah, so, I mean, in, based on what you're saying, I mean, could one week? People be three feet apart and then the next week not?
It's getting late in the year and and it could go back and forth. So, but right now, unless we cohorted. Which I am not recommending, and I don't think you're going to see a lot of schools at the secondary level cohorting. Um, I think it would actually be a step back for us because I think students would get less, much less synchronous instruction. In the cohorting model than they ought, the wooden hybrid model. I I just don't think it makes sense for us at this point, but we can't do it just yet. So. Had a meeting with other, with Ontario County and other county superintendents today. And we're generally using May third as as a general marker for making the decision on middle and high school students. Because if you figure that, let's say on May third, we did drop, you know. Into the high or into the into the substantial range, it would then take about two weeks to mobilize. So then. Then you're looking at May seventeenth. That's about as late as you you'd want to go because. If if you waited till May tenth to drop below, now you're looking at May twenty fourth, which is the week. Right before Memorial Day and you got about three weeks before even that minimal regents week starts. So the. You know, you, it's a huge disruption to the routine you've established. For for very little gain in terms of additional instructional days. So we're going to have to watch that really closely. Um, and Ontario County cautioned us, like, we're two forty five over seven days. We'd have to get under a hundred. They were not optimistic that that was going to happen. It's not impossible. But it's not where we're trending. So. That's a challenge for grade seven through twelve. And and could lead to an ultimate recommendation that we just finish out the year. In the hybrid model at those grade levels, but I'll I'll come back to that. Um. So at the elementary level, you know, this is interesting because the science says. That the, that transmission is less likely at the elementary levels. However. Over the last three weeks, we've had more elementary positive cases than secondary, but that could be an anomaly. Um, but you can move to three feet at the elementary level, even if you are in a high. Transmission, which, you know, that becomes sort of a board and community decision as to comfort level. Um, and they actually use the term I have here, you know, community uh, comfort level with risk. And we'll talk about that. So cohorting would be recommended. It's not required, but it's recommended. We're, but we're basically cohorting our elementary classes now because they stay together and. They would, they wouldn't be able to eat in their classrooms anymore because they'd be three feet apart. So they have to go to the cafeterias. But as long as we sat them six feet or, um, yeah, as long as we sat them six feet apart. As their cohort and kept the cohorts at different tables, it's still considering considered cohorting and and lunch. Should be manageable. Our next step really is going to be to look at our busing situation. Now. We're going to have to issue a new questionnaire that identifies specifically. How we would have to run our busing to make this work. So I will share with you the the parent questionnaire that we posted on April fifth. It was due on April eighth. We extended it to noon. On April ninth, it got a sixty percent response rate. You know, it was really a questionnaire. We really needed everybody's information. So, you know, we're going to need that information to build bus route. Route. So while statistically, if it were a survey, sixty percent is a good return rate. We're eventually going to need everybody to fill out the questionnaire that we're going to use to build this model or or we're going to have trouble. But we got a sixty percent response rate. Of those who responded. The response was overwhelmingly in favor of full in-person instruction, which was not a surprise. However, of those sixty percent who responded. It actually showed an increase of sixty more students, uh, because we asked. Do you currently use district transportation? Yes or no? Will you need district transportation? Yes or no? So of the eight hundred and eighty students for whom parents responded. The need for transport, district transportation actually went up by sixty kids. If you extrapolate that out for a hundred percent statistically, if it if that statistic were in pattern or the whole truth. That's an increase of a hundred kids. K, that would be K twelve, which we may not be doing, but. That's an increase you use of busing, which doesn't help what was already a problem. So we're going to have to re um, canvas and question, you know, send out another questionnaire. If we're going to focus in on K six, we need everybody to respond so that we know how to build these bus runs. The next piece is that, okay, how are we going to do this? Like, the guidance says basically one proceed on a bus unless you're from the same household. Whenever possible. Well, that comes down to the board and community comfort level. What what is whenever possible? We're looking at it and and if the goal is to return everybody. K six to in-person instruction. We may only have two options. We might have to say, well, it's not possible to do that. With only one person per seat except for same household, same daycare. So. We're going to have, we're going to have to do two kids per seat. If the board was willing to even question the community about that, we would then say, okay, this is what it would look like. Two kids per seat. Now, what we would do is we would start with kids who live in the same household. So as the buses load, we assign seats. So that the kids from the same household or from the same daycare, they're they're the first ones to sit together. And then everybody else goes one per seat. And then the closer you get to the school, you start adding the second kid. To the seat so that those kids are two to a seat for as little time as possible. And then in reverse on the way home, you empty the second kid out of the seat. As quickly as you can as they, you drop them off. So we would, if that's the model we went with. You got to outline that to families and say, if that's the model, what would you do? Would you go fully remote or would you go fully five day a week in person? If the, if that's a like a deal breaker for the board or the community, then another option would then be okay. We don't want to touch seven twelve because they're going to stay in hybrid model. Because of cohorting. So now we got to take, say, U P K through two. And three through six or some, I'm just making up those, but break them in half. And add a bus run. And and now, say, K three would do four hours. Early and or K three would do four hours early and four, six, four hours later. Now you're actually getting, you're in every day. But not for the full day, for four hours, and those times could be very odd and awkward for families. In terms of, you know, can somebody put my kid on the bus at ten thirty? You know, that sort of thing. So we got to look at those options. And part of the requirement is to engage with the community both through questionnaires, um, but also meetings to gather that input. But I'm very interested in the board's discussion when we get to that point, because the these are some important. Questions that we have to frame to the community. The other thing I would say about K six is that because this week's a wash. This week, our number one focus at the K six level is supporting our students. Through this unexpected loss. It's going to last all week because on Thursday. We're going to have kids arrive who haven't been in person yet. And without getting into a lot of detail, that Thursday, Friday group could have a tougher time. And we have to commit ourselves to supporting our students. Socially, emotionally throughout this week. I cannot have desks being crammed into rooms. While we're trying to guide students through the grieving process, which means you're then looking at a two-week. Window that starts a week from today. So you're looking at an early pot. The earliest possible start date for K six would be two weeks from Monday, the nineteenth, which is May third. Which is, you know, people will be disappointed with that, but at the K six level, that's still all of May and the better part of June. In person. We just have to decide what our threshold is on the bus that you're comfortable with. Um. So we will work as quickly as possible to advance the planning process, but I'm certainly going to need some feedback from the board tonight. On general comfort level because it, we're going to have to set up, you know, the right questions. We're going to have to set up the right venues and and data collection tools to move as quickly as we possibly can. Um, and really encourage um, all families at the designated grade levels to respond. So that we have concrete data um, to use for planning. So that's the update on the new guidance. I I, again, I I apologize for not having visuals. Um, I just want to pause before I move on to my next topic. To see if there's any questions. We will, we will come back to this. You have as a discussion item and I can answer questions then as well.
Man, man, I got one, one question that's been. Um, I've been thinking about, um, when, when, uh, when we, when a parent tells us that they do not need bus. Uh, it, but we, we are mandated to provide busing. I mean, so if a parent changes their mind. Overnight, then 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 we have to, then we have to find a way to pick up the student, correct?
Yeah, and that happened. So when we initially surveyed last summer. You know, we had a high percentage that says, said, we'll, we'll drive our kid. And then when transportation followed up with, to get concrete information to build the bus routes. All of a sudden, you know, a lot of those families could no longer do it. Um, and and that's why we ran out of bus space at fifth grade and had to move sixth grade to the secondary schedule.
Right, but that, but they can change their mind at any time. I mean, basically.
And, you know, we've been, you know, very transparent about our busing challenges. You know, the fact that the need for busing went up on the questionnaire, you know, speaks to family need, you know. You know, I assume that, you know, five days a week, they, you know, they need it, you know, they were able to work out maybe something two days a week. But at five days a week, they don't have that family or neighbor support anymore and and now they need the district. We get that and that's ultimately our obligation. We certainly are grateful to any family that can provide transportation to lessen the load. But at the end of the day, it is our legal obligation to provide transportation. And we get a lot of questions of, you know, whether it's on days when we didn't have enough staffing. Or in a situation like this, well, if I can give, if I can get my kid there, then I should be able to send him five days a week. You can't do that. It's an equity issue. You can't make parent transportation. A prerequisite for in-person instruction, because then you're, you have your haves and have nots. You know, that those families who can provide transportation, those kids get five days a week. And those families who can't provide the transportation, those kids can't. They don't, they don't. That's. It's illegal, it's unethical, and it's nothing I would ever endorse.
So, so you said, um, I'm like sitting here thinking, do I save everything for board discussion? But I'm just. So, so you kind of said like, it might be possible to put two kids in a seat, you know, if people felt comfortable doing that. So I know you don't have all the numbers, but like, is your projection with two people, two kids in a seat, using the numbers you have? Like, would that be possible or no?
We believe, I mean, we've got a canvas and get the information. But with the number who have, with the the remote numbers. And again, using the questionnaire statistically and looking at our pattern of remote numbers. And expecting those to hold relatively steady and with the number of parents that have indicated they could drive. You know, we certainly have to reroute everything. But we believe that to per seat, we could make it work. It's just a matter of. Is the community and is the board comfortable with to proceed?
And so. So what you're saying is first, you have to decide if that's something that we're comfortable even putting out to the community. Then you'd have to put it out to the community, see the response you'd get, and then from there.
Only in that you, you ultimately have to approve the amendment to the point. So if you're not, if you're not willing to even entertain. Or potentially approve an amendment to the plan that involves two per seat, then there's no sense asking the community. You, you, if you're asking the question. You're, you know, you're indicating that if if the community is okay with it, that you are. Good for now? Just two quick things. So. Another new piece of guidance that came out at four o'clock this afternoon was new guidelines for end of year. End of academic year activities, including graduations and proms. It came out at four o'clock. I have not read it. I know that Mr. Bay Rossi has started going through it. There are different levels based upon size of event and indoor versus outdoor and what type of event. And what size venue in terms of weather testing, um. COVID testing or vaccine, proof of vaccination is required. So for smaller events, no, but the bigger the event. Then you get in to have everybody who attends would have to show either proof of vaccination. Or proof of um, being tested. And again, because I have not had a chance, it came out at four o'clock. I had a chance to dive into it. I don't know all the rules yet, but we'll lay them out, but that will play into. Our graduation planning and it'll also play into our, you know, our attempts to have a prom or ball. Which we're still hoping to do, but you know, these businesses who we use to host proms and balls. Their livelihood is on at at stake. They, they must follow the rule. They know. They, they must follow the rule, they know the rules. And they must follow the rules or they. Risk heavy sanctions and potentially being put out of business and, and, you know, we deal with reputable. Longstanding businesses and um. So we're gonna. You know, if an event, if we're gonna have an event of a certain size and it requires testing and or proof of vaccination. Those businesses are gonna make darn sure that we're testing or, you know, that the kids are showing proof of testing or vaccination. So. Um, and, and that. That's before you even get into our graduation option. So I imagine. Once we read and analyze. Our graduation options, we might identify and then, and then survey the senior class is, you know, okay, here are the things we could do. You know, what, what's your, you know, what's your preference? And, and again, we're like last year, we're willing to do. Two different things. You know, if we need to. Or if there's a way to do one thing and meet every, you know. Meet all the needs in one event, we can do that too. We just gotta dive into that guidance um, to identify the rules. And then finally, I just wanna remind everybody that we do have a plan in place for our next meeting, which is our, actually our normal. April board meeting, we moved to a Wednesday to coincide with the BOSI's um, budget and school board vote. Um, so it's not to have a fourth April word meeting. That'll be Wednesday, the twenty first. It will be in the auditorium. We've, we're working out our um. Covid protocols, we got it worked out. So people fill out one form. That on one forum, they'll be able to do their covid questionnaire and indicate. Um, on the same form, whether or not they, you know. Intend to do public comment so that they're not having to sign in and touch multiple pieces of paper and. Everything's kept self-contained and that's been run through our covid captain and our school nurses. Um, so everything will be up on the website, but um. We, we will be in person in the auditorium on the Wednesday, the twenty first at six thirty. And we encourage anyone who intend, intends to attend that meeting in person. Um, to see the website in advance for the protocols and to. Give yourself a little extra time and we'll, we'll probably bring people in through the main high school entrance off the south parking lot, but all of that will be outlined. Um, and then public comment, you will have to be present. In person um, to make public comment. So that's my report. It was lengthy. I apologize, but a lot going on.
Lot going on, lot going on. Okay, let's move on to public comment. Um, Jake, is there anything in there?
Yes, we have one public comment from Rachel Room, Roomizen. Sorry. Uh, Rachel says, states, can we also address the actual questions in the questionnaire? I think they were a bit misleading. I am able to provide transportation but didn't ask in a way that I could answer. I am able to provide transportation, but it didn't ask that in a way that I could answer in that. That specifically. I feel that at this point, hundred percent in person is not feasible this year. We need to focus on the fall one hundred percent in person. Thank you for all your hard work. Thank you for that comment.
Yes, thank you for that comment. Nothing else? That's it? Okay, so um, we have two board discussion items that we've kind of touched on. Um. The first one is the budget. Are there any other thoughts or questions pertaining to um, the budget? Hey, that's my teacher think time, so I'm thinking, no. Everybody asked what they wanted to ask when he was presenting. Tracy, did you have something to say?
No, I just looked, Jake, did you have something or Ryan? It almost looked like you were about to say something, but I.
No, I surprisingly don't. Um, that's what I was thinking.
I was thinking back to that, that note page and I think, I think it was all covered.
Okay, great. Okay, and so is there any other thoughts um, around increased in-person instruction? Um, I think Matt is looking for some feedback. Anybody have any initial thoughts?
I got a couple of questions first, if that's okay. Um, Matt, when you met with the county today, did they give you, any of you guys, any indication as to? Um. What they, cuz the county has to approve whatever plan we put forth, right? Is that? Am I reading that right?
You, you're reading it right. Um. They basically put it right back on us from a liability standpoint. And they say, if, if you're saying. That. You're meeting the minimum standards and you're willing to take on the risk and liability associated with your plan. Then we will. Acknowledge receipt of your plan.
So there's not really an approval, they'll just acknowledge receipt of it?
Well, the guidance says.
They have to.
That the State Department of Health does not reapprove plans. That have been amended but previously approved. That we have to upload them to state ed website, although we haven't been told how to do that yet. We have to upload them to our own website and we have to update, we have to send them to. Um, the local health department. And it says that the local health department is um. You know, responsible for ensuring um. It, it says, local health departments are the entity charged with enforcement of these minimum guidelines.
So they have to enforce the guidelines, but they don't have to approve a plan. But if we say this is the plan we're going with, they're trusting that we're. Following the guidelines. That they have to enforce? I don't know. It sounds perfectly, perfectly reasonable if you think of the whole. But I don't know if I even know what I just said.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So it, it, it really comes down. I mean, they use the term, you know. Uh, where is it? I think it's on page nine. I wanna get this, this term right. Ultimately, the school slash district's decision to move to a shorter physical distance. Will come down to a local community's risk tolerance based on its unique circumstances. So. If you, you know, if we say we wanna get K six in person and this is how, this is the only way. We can do it is by putting two per seat. Cannot, can the board? And can our community tolerate that level of risk?
Okay, my second question. Am I right in assuming that? When we move to three feet versus six feet. Positive cases will lead to more quarantines.
That, that came up today. And cuz right now we've been able to limit our quarantines. Um, based upon the fact that we are sixty. And the question came up, are you going to change your standard? To three feet? And they're still deciding.
So that meeting was a lot of help.
They've been put in the box. Too.
Right.
And, you know, this is. This is how things go. The state. Grabs the authority. When it suits them. And then they delegate and decentralize. The authority and the responsibility. When it suits them. And here they have delegated decentralized and it's scaring everybody. Um, I will say really important, the one thing it does say. If you meet the criteria based on the, the transmission rates, students can be three feet apart. But adults, no matter what. Adults must always be six feet apart and they must always be six feet apart from the kids. According to the new guidance.
And, and K six is good to be three feet regardless of level of. Transmission.
Yes, they encourage cohorting, but we're basically. They don't require it, they encourage it, but we're basically cohorting. Because. Kid, you know, they stay with their class and then they, they won't be able to eat in the classroom anymore. So there will be greater amount of. Passing each other in the hallway, but as long as we seat them in their cohorts. So that Mrs. Smith's class is eating just with Mrs. Smith's class and Mrs. Jones's class is sitting separate. Then you're still cohorting.
Can I, can I? Can I ask what the temperature feel is on the staff?
Um, we've had initial. Conversations with their, their leadership and those are ongoing. And, and the. The stakeholder feed that, feedback process identified in the guidance is, is not just parents and community members, but. The um, collective bargaining groups as well.
So can you just, I, I don't know if you've already done this and I just didn't get it. So. What would the process look like moving forward? I mean, obviously. If I'm understanding you right, we as a board could say. Listen. We, we wanna just write out our plan the way it is. We think that's best. Or you're saying we could present to the community. This is a way we could get K six back. This is what it's gonna look like.
You, you could say. We're staying put. If. You're interested in reducing physical distance. Then you must follow these guidelines and you must engage with your community.
So. So. If, if we said we were interested, there's still a bunch of steps to go in order.
As quickly as possible to do that. We'd, we'd have to. Yeah, and I've already asked Todd and Lydia to start working. Just with the general structure and language of. Of a new questionnaire, but I know Tracy and I have to speak with transportation to, to know exactly what. You know, just to confirm would. I don't, we, we played around with three per row. So you got. Two seats, center aisle, right? So as you go across the road, that's potentially four seats. Actually, pre-Covid times with little kids, that could be six kids across. That could be three in a seat, but we're not going there. We talked about, you know. Going window, window and one kid on one side of the aisle, on the aisle side, but the seats are thirty-six inches. Across, so. If you're gonna do that. There's not a whole lot of difference than going to per seat and we're not sure that three per row. Gets us there, but four per row. To per seat. We're fairly confident would. It just becomes that, that risk tolerance and that comfort level.
So, so. So if that went out to the community, your feedback could come back. They wanna stay, they don't wanna change, right?
It could go either way. I mean, you, you, you could, I mean. It could be heavily saying, let's go for it. Two in a seat, let's do it. It could be heavily saying. I'm not comfortable with that. Could be split fifty-fifty or anywhere in between.
Okay.
Ryan, did you have more questions?
I'm assuming that. The, the cohort, when they talk about cohorting at the elementary level. They're only discussing stuff in the building, so transportation doesn't count as what I'm getting at. So.
You would do assigned seats so that they're always. With the same kids. So again, what you would do. Is the, the very first kids who have to sit together two to a seat would be. Siblings or from the same household or from, from the same daycare. And then. On that particular bus, on that particular route. Then you would start adding other kids second to that seat, but later in the run so that they're two to a seat for less amount of time.
Yeah, and you had asked a question earlier about. What? Model of busing. To use. Not sure I would. Both of them kinda. Give you pause, but I don't think that bringing kids in. For more days but less time, splitting the bus runs, I don't think that makes a heck of a lot of sense. Um, and also it, that would be. That would also be taxing on our parents. Anyway, cuz you're talking about rather than three days worth of, of daycare, you're now going to have to provide. Five days of daycare. For some amount of time anyway. So I, I don't think that model. Makes a lot of sense for us to try.
Cuz we have to work within contractual hours, but also provide enough turnaround time between the runs. To get one group of kids. Home. Clean the bus. Pick up the other group. So you really start to cut in, into an instruct, into your instructional time significantly.
We're ahead of this.
Training on all your other operations, feeding kids, everything. Sorry, sorry.
Well, so my opinion at this point in time is that we take a look at getting the K three six going. And then doing the survey and having the parents decide whether they feel comfortable with that two-seat. You know, on the bus, that's the only way we'd, we'd be able to do it at this point in time.
I think they're gonna tell us what their appetite is.
Yep.
Let me ask you this, because this was. We didn't ask this question in the first questionnaire because we didn't want to be leading. And we didn't, you know, there's a lot of angst and we didn't want to. Steer anything in any one direction. However, some people expressed frustration. That we didn't ask this question, that we didn't make hybrid. An option. I will say this, we can't run three models at once. We can't run fully remote, fully in person and hybrid all at same time. There's too many moving parts to that. It, it's not feasible. Do you ask? Sort of a scenario A question. Would you rather? Here are your two options. Scenario one, here are your two options. Finish out the year exactly as we are. Or switch to the choice between fully remote. And or fully in person and it looks like this to, to on a bus, to per seat. And then scenario. Two is. Just, this is what it's gonna be. Do you pick fully remote or do you pick fully in person? Or is that too many moving parts? But there were some people who were frustrated that. That they, they couldn't pick, stay put. But if you, if you put it all in one question. Then they could misinterpret it and you get a third, a third, a third. And it doesn't really tell you.
I think the more people's. People's voice you get, the better, you know, so if you're able to frame it. So that they can express where they're at. Cuz like you said, sixty percent is good on a survey, but. Do we really know? I mean, it's still forty percent, we don't know.
Well, I think it, I think it would be worth having an open-ended um, question on there that people could fill in comments. So if, if. If one of the situations doesn't fit. They could leave a comment that explains why their situation doesn't fit one of the options kind of thing, so. And, and maybe to ask for clarification that we can then reach back out to that parent to say. This is what. Yeah, so there's a conversation to, to clear up any con, um, any confusion or. Or specific situations that might be different, just based on the current families' situations that are different. So I, if there's a way to do an open-ended.
The, the only, and we can certainly do.
Even if it's just a checkbox of please contact me, I have questions about the survey.
Okay, the only concern I have is that if that leads to fifteen hundred phone calls.
Okay, my concern in regards to doing more than one option at this point, I mean, cuz you've got. If, if you're in person and we're trying to go in person full-time, so it's either you're in person full-time. Or you're remote the whole time. If we add that other. Thing in the questionnaire about, okay, if that's one option. Or the other one is staying as is, I mean, how how would you determine? Based on the percentage.
Say like, just scenario A, choose between these two things. And then switch to scenario B and now choose between these two things.
Right, but when they come back, I mean, how is it gonna be? Percent wants scenario B, that's what we go with, or?
If what, I'm not saying that this would happen, but if scenario A is. Status quo or the option between fully remote or fully in person, eighty percent. Say status quo, well, you got your answer pretty much. But if it's eighty percent, say, I want the choice between fully remote or fully in person. And then you go to that question and then yet then you've got the actual information to build it out.
What if it's not that? What if it's fifty-fifty? Then then what?
Then we have another conversation.
Then the board's got a difficult decision to make and.
So my point, I mean, we're running out of time as it is, so I really think that we don't have really the ability to do that at this point.
You know, you you started asking questions like that, now you got another two weeks to analyze it. To then get back together to decide, here's what we're moving forward in another two weeks. So now that May third date just went to May seventeenth and. You know, I think at some point we've just gotta pick something, go with it and and get the plan going.
Yeah.
So just ask. Here's what it would look like, pick fully remote or pick fully hu- fully in person. That's it, hybrid's gone.
That's what I'm, that's my suggestion.
Are hybrid now? Like, what's the percentage of people hybrid now?
Well, all but the remote, so.
Right, so that, so people. Well, that's a huge percentage that are gonna be out of there.
You got eighty, roughly eighty-three percent of students are in the hybrid model cuz that's the most they can get right now. So seventeen percent. Seven, yeah, seventeen percent, that's K twelve. But elementary, there's only eight percent that are remote right now.
So if you put the survey out like Matt and Sheri are saying. That grants the whole population is going to change to either in person like or remote.
If we're, now that I think, I I apologize, I'm exhausted, but. With 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 just K six. If we are serving K twelve, serving K twelve, I would think differently cuz you've got more remote kids up there, but. You only have about eight, seven or eight percent hu- fully remote. At elementary, so that's heavily in favor of in person, then you probably just ask the two choices. The the only risk you run is those families who are like, I'm good with two days at six feet. And how do they convey? That that's what they're comfortable with. That's, I guess, my question. How, what what avenue do they have to convey? That I I'm good with two days at six feet. Do they, the only thing they could do, the only way they could voice their. Displeasure is by picking full remote.
That's where your comfort level comes in, right? As as a community, you gotta, you gotta decide your own risk, your family's do, unfortunately, that's part of the guidance, so. That's what's gotta come back to.
Yep.
So I had a similar question to Ryan about like the results of quarantining. Um, cuz I I would, I would imagine that they would quarantine twice as many people now if we went to three feet. And there was a.
I will say this, they are, they are quicker to quarantine the little kids than the older kids. Because especially like UPK, K and one. They, their general assumption is. That those kids are gonna not be as good mask wearers, or they're gonna be more fidgety with them. So if there's an exposure, UPK, K one. Most often, they're going to quarantine the whole class. That's even at six.
And and I almost think that that's more disruptive to families than sticking to what we've been doing all year. So suddenly having to now find daycare for your student for two days for two weeks that you didn't have to find daycare for because. The quarantining group got bigger. Is almost, is almost, cuz it's less predictable, I guess, is what I'm trying to say, so. Oh, there's no, there's no good option.
I would agree with Sheri and Matt that if we're gonna ask a question, we just. We ask the question. I don't think there's, you know, Matt's right, there's not, there's not a heck of a lot of time left in the year for us to weed through. A possibility. Something that the numbers would suggest that. This group of parents and this group of kids more than any other wanna come back in person. So I think we ask that question. And if if the pendulum shifts all the way the other way. We're gonna be in the hybrid anyway, and we knew we were wrong. I I mean, that that's, they will answer us. With this, this answer, but of course, we have to, we also have to stress. From the district and the board, we we need to know, we can't, it's sixty percent's great, but it's not. Great enough, we've gotta know.
And we're only gonna survey K six at this point.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, so just to clarify, so I think, I I if I'm understanding right. We're at the point for the secondary group. Where does sixth grade fall in that? So the sec- the secondary group is maybe continue with the the.
Because sixth grade is in the elementary, it's elementary.
But they're on the different time schedules, so that doesn't.
Doesn't matter. In the elementary school.
Okay, so, so seven twelve would remain as is, hybrid, two days.
At least until unless the transmission rate comes down. So at some point, we may. Do a survey to them. In case, so we're ready in case the transmission rate happens to cut more than a half.
But at this point, we would.
Starting then.
K six, pre-K six, and find out what. Of two options they would choose, right? Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Say that again?
So at this point, we would only survey K six, and we would ask them to choose from two options. Full in person or. Fully remote. With an explanation of what full in person would be. It would be two people, two students per seat on the bus and.
Once we confirm that, but that's what we think we'd have to do, yes.
Right.
So one of my cabinet members. I I I would normally do this during a board meeting, but. Any idea, you know, so a cabinet member. Said, what about these choices? I prefer staying with the current hybrid model, but would choose full in person if the only options were that or fully remote. I'd prefer staying with the current hybrid model, but would choose fully remote if the only options were that or full in person at three feet with two two. Two student per seat. Three, I'd prefer full in person five days a week, or four, I'd prefer fully remote five days a week. I I, yeah, I just worry you'd get twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-five. I, it's trying to get it what we're getting at, but. To Matt's point, you get too many moving parts.
Are you, where are you, Jake? Like, where are you? Are you? Like, what's your comfort level?
Me? I I don't know. I I I really don't know. I think, I think you can ask the question, um, and I think what Matt, what you just wrote there, Matt, I don't, I think you can ask it in a way that that. Allows people to to voice their opinion one way or the other. You know, but like, like a lot of her hard, I mean, somebody said there's no easy answer to this, and there's just not going to be. So. So we have to. I mean, we gotta figure out what's best for our students. And I don't really know what is. Um, I mean, I know five days a week is best for, you know, in person is the best, but how do we? That's not an option for everybody right now, um, so how do we maximize that? I really, I really don't know. Um, you know, I I think for, I do think there's a lot of people that like the two-day oh thing, you know, and and if we switch to fully five days. Are gonna pull their students out and and be annoyed that they can't send their student here two days a week anymore. So. But you know. The, so, you know, as as with all hard decisions, it's not, it's, it's someone's gonna be. We're we're not gonna make a decision that that fits all situations. And and timing is tough here cuz it is, it is really close to the end of the year. Um, I mean, it's really close. But, um. So so I don't know how much time, you know, how much time of our people's. People's, our staff and and administration's time to spend redoing things. You know, is that, is that best, is that the best way for them to spend their time in trying to or or figure other ways of of meeting student needs? Um, over the next, over the next few weeks. I I really, I really don't have a good answer to this. At all.
I think it would be really beneficial. Uh, for a lot of reasons, to to end the year at any level. Of full in person. I I think it makes the planning process for next year different. I think it takes a lot of pressure off. It's just. The only thing I worry about is trying to account for, you know, how do you really get at? Parents' comfort level. In the way you're framing the question.
Yeah, I mean, cuz I was, you know, thinking that we just, you know, last two weeks, we go full. You know, or something, you know, that we that we end with that, you know, but there's gonna be some parents that are gonna be like. Now my stu- I'm not comfortable sending my student full-time, so now I'm pulling them out the last two weeks, you know, and 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 so, so. You know, that's, that that's gonna traumatize some students, think. So. So I don't know. I mean, that's, I mean, cuz Matt, cuz I, cuz cuz very much. You know, we we do wanna, we do wanna shift, I mean, and certainly we've heard from community members that think we should be going back to full-time. Um, you know, and that's, and you know, and I, I want to honor that also. So blah, 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 I don't know. Sorry, I wasn't trying to be funny there.
Matt Murphy, you started to say something.
I did, you know, one of my thoughts was, I think our goal throughout this whole thing was at some point, kind of what Matt just had said was. Our goal was to return to full five-day in-person instruction. Now we've got an opportunity to try to do that at the K six level. I think we need to to push forward with that and just see where it takes us. Um, you know, before we we talked about different groups and things, and like Jake said, you're not gonna make everybody happy, but. You know, if you look at even those survey responses, I think what we have to date, yeah, that's. But the the overwhelming response is that they wanna be back in person, so I think, I think that's the way we need to add, honestly.
I agree with that too. I mean, the CDC is the one that, you know, changed, and it's been weeks since they put their. You know, made their changes and it's taken the state forever, you know, to get on board with it and. It's not like this isn't gonna continue to go on. You know, we're gonna be dealing with this, you know, all of this come September anyways, so.
A- again, I just. For transparency's sake, both the CDC and the state guidance, give examples. Of one per seat skipping rows on a bus, comma, whenever possible. I just wanna be very transparent that there is a big difference between that and two per seat. And if. If the, if, again, if you're not comfortable with it, there's no sense asking the question. But if you're comfortable with it, we'll ask the question and we'll move on the basis of two per seat.
And just to be clear, there's no room for one more bus run for K six.
We don't have the drivers.
Well, I mean, staggered without without impacting as much.
It it would, you'd need all your drivers and you'd have to, cuz you gotta still cover the ninety square miles twice, or now three times. Instead of twice a day, so. You just had, you'd need every bus. And and now it takes a long time to you, you know, some of you know how long those bus runs are, you know, your kids have ridden. And in order to, you know, get all the way down to the, you know, out to the outer stretches of this district and back. Clean the bus and do it over again. Eats and do instructional.
So.
I have a team working on different schedules, but you're looking at. You know, four hours in school inclusive of eating.
So Tracy, where are you?
I don't know.
I'm falling in line with Jake a little bit. Um, I feel like. I am, I'm. Oh, sorry, I'm I'm also nervous by by not, you know, giving those remote parents a voice. Um, but if the rest of the board is wanting to move forward with. Um, those other two choices, I mean, I can get behind that too, so. I mean, at least there is an option for them, like they're not just having to come back, you know, if they're uncomfortable, they can go to remote. But I'm definitely feeling Jake on this, I'm just. So.
I think this this group has. When we sent the survey out, they were, they were more likely to come back in person. And their numbers since the beginning in the hybrid have said that they're more willing to come back.
This group, yes.
The unknown is if they're willing to come back at two per seat. We're gonna know that as soon as we ask the question.
Well, you're also gonna know if, you know, if that's the option at this point in time, maybe they'll try to figure out something else of how to get their child to school instead of the boss. Cuz that's an option for them too. If they're concerned about the two per seat, then they could look at other options of getting their child to to school.
I mean, I guess we we have to ask, right? We're, I mean, we're kinda just going in circles here, so, I mean.
Yeah, we need to get a survey out.
I can, I can fall in line with. Asking the survey about, you know. Um, what Matt was saying. I mean, I I I see that point and it was our goal and, I mean. The survey's gonna tell you, either they're comfortable or they're not, so. Ah, this is a rough year, this is hard.
Alright, so recap then what the two options are.
Sorry. Gonna, we'll lay out what it. You know, we'll lay out what it looks like. This is how we would get every K six in person. It would be. We'll confirm, but X number of kids per seat, you know, we'll explain it, we'll. You know, try to avoid it where we can, use siblings and housemates or daycare mates first, but. Up to two per seat. And your choices are. Fully remote, fully in person. I need district transportation. I don't need district.
Looking at, that would be beginning in an ideal world, the first week, first or second week in May.
Ideal world, a third. That's hustle.
So they would be making a decision for May and three weeks in June, basically.
Um, elementary goes. Right through.
Five weeks in June.
Right up to Friday before graduation. I mean, those are half days, but that last week, but it's pretty much all I do.
It's about twenty-one extra. If we go to June, that.
I think I got caught off there, but my, my question is more of on the survey. It's not. It's not, do you wanna come back? It's. Assuming this is the plan, which do you choose? Right, right, you know, I had to make that clear. We're, we're not surveying to say, what do you wanna do? It's, what are you going to do when we do X, Y, and Z? Right, okay.
Good point, yeah.
We'll move forward on that basis.
That was intense. Thank you for everyone that spoke. Um, any more public comment, Jake? No? Okay, let's move on to a German and executive session, please. Yeah, we did. He did. He just was on mute.
Can I make a motion to adjourn the meeting? Okay, oh.
Okay, all in favor? Hi, the opposed motion carried. Thank you.